All right, good evening and everyone. Thank you for your extreme patience this evening. We have a couple of different ways of recording this meeting to hopefully find one that works. We can make sure that it's for a public record. And in our technological age, we're mandated to make sure that this is recorded and put online in a way that people can actually get to it. So we don't have any microphones that are working except the one that's at the podium. So we have on the dais to try to speak loudly. Particularly, we have recording devices up here and they should be able to record. But as said at the podium, when we have staff on, we'll ask the staff, "Please go to the podium as well," because then Apple will pick up easier on the recording devices that we have there. The first item on our agenda for this meeting of the Planning Commission, August 1st, 2017, is the approval of amendments from our previous meeting of July 11th, 2017. And the Planning Commissioner has a motion. If he or she could please say more with the hand in the air and all the clap. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we take the text amendment items that are on our agenda currently and move those to the head of the meeting. Mainly, there's that something that we discuss mostly up here. And since IT is on the wing, there could be a possibility that we can have microphones based upon time if we want to.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
I approve the amendment from July 11th, 2017.
Thank you. There was a motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Quinn. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, approve the amendment from July 11th, 2017. Have your own staff back here, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. I should mention that Commissioner Judy Anderson is excused this evening. The other six members of the Planning Commission aren't present. Which brings us to item six on the agenda. Text amendments. Amendment 2009 West Jordan City Code Title 12, Signs and Non-Discrepancy in Signs and Endorsements with Citywide Applicability. The city of West Jordan is the applicant and our legal department will be presenting this, is he incorrect?
Yes, thank you very much. I'll walk out here so we can...
This one was working. Is it still? Okay. So, the text amendment for item number six is to allow for those signs that predate the code to be modified. When something's grandfathered into the code and it's a legal preconforming condition, what happens with that is it can't be updated or modified unless it's brought into the current standard. We want to allow for the signs in the city that predate the code to be able to be brought up to a more viable, visible standard for everyone so their aesthetics better for everyone and not only that, that they look pretty for the store, I guess. So what we're proposing here is that the signs be allowed. They would not be allowed to be expanded beyond their use. That wouldn't be allowed under the grandfather laws and the grandfather clauses. But they would be allowed to be brought up in new materials, to be brought up so they look new, conforming to an aesthetics standard, but would not be required to be brought up all the way to the current city code standard. And so that's the text amendment for item number six, Agenda Item Six tonight. Do you have questions for me before I sit down?
Thank you. You have questions for the other city staff? Thank you.
You know what, I gotta say. In the one, right, right in 1245G, it's the materials enhancement. It talks about a legal non-conforming sign within the city center core shall be replaced or enhanced in any way. We put it subsequent requirements in the title. What are we trying to do there?
I'm not the attorney who drafted this. Duncan did and I didn't have a time to discuss that specific code. I think Larry's gonna walk up here and talk about it. Thanks, Larry.
The city center core has very specific sign requirements. City Center Core is the area just... This is fun tonight. It's the area just across the street. So it has very specific sign requirements of its own. The city center frame, it does not. And that's everything on the west side. And so I think this, what we want in the city center core is a total upgrade of the area where this would just be the signs.
Something just restarted.
And so, yeah, just again, the legal non-conforming standard, once that's set, once the code is passed, you can't change that. This would be giving them the ability to bring those signs up to date, to change them, but not requiring them to come up to complete compliance with the code. So is there any other questions?
Any other questions for staff?
Your microphone works by there.
Yes, yeah, I think we're good. Thank you.
I'm gonna go have a seat then.
Thank you. All right, this was noticed as a public hearing. So if anyone has anything that he or she would like to comment on regarding item number six on the agenda, please feel free to come forward to the podium at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and bring it back to the Planning Commission for possible action. Commissioner Green?
I'm going to...I gotta find it. Where the...there it is. Based on the findings set forth in this staff report, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend West Jordan 2009 City Code Sections 1, 2, 4, 1, and 1, 2, 4, 2, and add Section 1, 2, 4, 5 with an amendment that fixes paragraph 1, 2, 4, 1, A, 3 by striking the redundant word F O R. There's just a redundant word in that paragraph, so...
Commissioner Luthy?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Item number seven on the agenda this evening, text amendment, Amendment 2009 West Jordan City Code Section 14-3-8, expiration of subdivision approval with citywide applicability. The city of West Jordan is again the applicant and our legal department will be presenting that as well?
Much better. So this item, number seven in the packet, is to clarify when an item vests, when it comes before the city, when it comes to the engineering standards, when we have someone build a development. Right now, there's some confusion as to when those items are vesting. We're gonna clarify under the code, which through this text amendment, that the items will vest once they go through final plat. And we'll do that through one of four ways. They will initially be given this information when they come in and sign application. They'll be given this information when they sign the bonding agreements and they'll be given this information at the planning level. And it will also be as a part of the motion. So this will be given to the applicant several times. So there shouldn't be any confusion as to when these items are vesting and what they are vesting at what times. Part of the policy reason for why we're doing this is because some of these projects go on for 10, 15 years, sometimes longer. And what happens is we have engineering standards that change over that time and we're trying to enforce engineering standards that sometimes are a decade or almost two decades old that no longer comply with road compaction and everything else we're trying to do. So we're trying to make it clear for everybody what the vesting interest will be, what standards they will be given as they move through the project and what will be expected by the city for clarification.
Thank you. So that'll be in at least four different areas, which I always find nice because then that...
That's correct.
Really holds someone to following the standard. They find it at least in one or two of those areas. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? This also was noticed as a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on item number seven regarding this text amendment, please feel free to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Quinney?
Thank you, Chairman. As long as nobody has any objections, I wanna make a motion.
A question from Commissioner Luthy, please.
Yeah, my question, this was kind of discussed in the pre-meeting, but it keeps talking about engineering standards. That's planning and aesthetic standards as well, right? It's not just road compaction. It also would be the other standards, like I had mentioned fencing. Those kind of standards, as they evolved through the years, that's that same kind of vested, correct?
Yeah, yes.
So that's already understood in this. We don't need to add that to it.
Preliminary, unless it's a part of a development plan. But preliminary, what that grants is use and density. That's what we're saying.
Okay. Everything else, whether it's what kind of fencing they're gonna use to put in for the subdivision, what they're gonna do for landscaping or anything else that may come...
Yeah, because all of that's final.
Perfect.
Commissioner Green?
I'm going to...I don't object to the soon be made motion by Commissioner Quinney. The one thing that I would ask, if we'll go back to Mr. Murray, right? Go back to Duncan and ask is that in A3, in 14, 3, 8, A3, and B2, it says the zoning administrator may require the owner or developer to sign a document agreeing to comply with the current engineering standards. And I'm wondering if that shouldn't be shall. And so that would just be something that for me, if we can take a look at that, maybe decide what the intent was different between may and should or may and shall, it might be a good idea just to look at that.
When we draft these, they're being presented for you guys for review and for tweaking. Obviously, based off what I said a second ago and my discussions with Duncan, our intent is that they will sign a document at that time. So I think shall would be appropriate. If you guys in passing or giving recommendation for this tonight want to change that to shall, obviously you have that latitude.
I'll make the motion then...what's there? There we go. I'll make the motion that based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to amend the West Jordan 2009 City Code Sections 14-3-5 and 14-3-8, the expiration of the vesting and subdivision plats and regulations with the amendment in 14, 3, 8, A3 that says the zoning administrator shall require the owner developer to sign a document and the same in B2, the zoning administrator shall require them to sign the document.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Is there any discussion to the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Bringing us to item number two on the agenda this evening, Del Taco, 5526 West Ranches Loop Road, preliminary and final site plan and conditional use permit for fast food restaurant. PC Zone, Chase Brook Company, Jay Larson is the applicant. Please feel free to come forward this evening and present your application.
So we have a 1.5 acre lot in the Clay Hollow subdivision. It's Lot 4. It's a 2,900 square foot Del Taco. And I don't know if they have the site plan on there. They said they haven't, but I'm not sure they do. The stacking kind of comes around the building towards the south side. The north side is 7,800 South and that's the drive-through. It's important for them to see, that people know the drive-through's open and the business is open. Parking's all on the south side. We've met all the parking requirements from the city standards. The stacking is adequate for the site so the neighboring parcels shouldn't be affected by the parking or the stack on the site. The building's been reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee. It was approved by them a few weeks ago. I can't remember the date on that. The cities, we've gone through all the city approvals for the site plan. I think we've passed, the staff approval has approved the site. They are gonna open, hire 60 employees in the area to staff this restaurant. It'll be a 24-hour, 7-day-a-week restaurant to serve the citizens out there. Any questions for me?
Commissioner Green?
Two questions. Is there gonna be any outdoor eating on this particular...
There is outdoor eating. If you go back on the west side, and I think there's four tables that show across there, that's an outdoor patio seating.
Okay, that's what those are. Okay. And the second question, I don't see a sidewalk that runs from the street to the front of the building.
It comes off, right where it says 7,800 South, there is a pedestrian access across there.
But what about from access from the street to the south? It looks like you'd have neighbors walking through the parking lot to come to the store.
Yeah, there isn't. We did discuss that with...the center doesn't have a sidewalk that goes through the whole center to connect to that. So that's a lot, not our lot. We can talk to the developer and see if that is possible. That wasn't something that was brought up with the staff and we're gonna think about
Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. Yeah, I think our intent is with this area being a nice little node that's right off of the community, it would be really nice to have a lot more of a pedestrian access versus just the cars. So if you would bring that up to the developer, we'd really appreciate having some kind of a protected pedestrian walkway through the area.
Yeah, we could talk to the master developer on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? We'll reserve some time for you if there's anything you'd like to address after the public comments section.
Okay. The Paul Heitzlberger that I franchisee, you'd like to say something?
Thank you for your time and interest in our project. This'll be our second location here in West Jordan. The first one opened in 1999, 18 years ago. So we've been doing tacos for quite a while now. And of course, today's Tuesday, so... My wife and I own the 31 restaurants here in Utah and one in Mesquite, Nevada. And we will, as Jay mentioned, we'll be hiring 60 people to take care. And we don't hire at minimum wage. You know, we're in the $12 to $16 an hour range typically. And so we don't fool around with going on the cheap. We appreciate the support of the community over these last 18 years. It's been, this is an awesome city to do business in. You folks are fair. You're above board. If we have an issue, we fix it and take care of it. The location out west is the right place to be with the growth of the city and what's happening. It's fairly unusual for us to have two locations in the city, but it's right to do that here. And I appreciate your support. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, so...
Any questions from Mr. Heitzlberger? Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much a question, but just a thank you for looking into West Jordan to do more business. We appreciate when companies give us a chance to work with them as well.
Thank you. This'll be, you know, about a $2 million taco stand, quotation large. So we want, we have to do it right and have the right service. And we will be open 24/7. And that's not easy, but we try to do it right. And I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCandless, you have this for the city?
Yeah. I will make this brief. Again, this is just for a fast food restaurant in general, which in our city code requires a conditional use permit. So what the applicant is looking for is site plan approval, both preliminary and final, and then also a conditional use permit to allow the use itself. They do meet the parking requirements, landscaping requirements for this use. There's bicycle rack, there's ADA parking that's available on the south side of the building. We like how the building's oriented towards 7,800 South. Our recommendation, let's see, they did go through the design review committee as the applicant has indicated. I don't know if you got a chance to take a look at the facades of the building, but there's a variety of materials that are used. There's stone on the south, I mean, on the lower side of the Wayne's Code, there's a number of and variety of materials that are gonna be used. So we think it's attractive site. It's well designed and our recommendation would be for approval.
Well, thank you. Because this is preliminary and a final site plan, can you speak to our concern about pedestrian access?
This is in a planned community zone where pedestrian access is important. So one of the things that you could look at is connecting or making a pedestrian connection, maybe through that, along the western side of that driveway across the side. It looks like there is a landscaped area, but that's a, it's a driveway. It's not a public street on the east side of the building itself. So that's just one thing that, you know, to mitigate safety concerns is that you could require as part of your approval.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. McCandless? Seeing none, we'll open the public comments section of this item. If you have anything that you'd like to address, any question, concern regarding this application, please feel free to present at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and bring it back to discussion among the Planning Commission. Commissioner Green?
Just in as administrative note, as you get the staff report ready for the city council, in paragraph three, the first couple of paragraphs talk about Del Taco located in a neighborhood commercial zone. You probably wanna delete that and just have it be the PC that's on the other page, just to make that, so that that's accurate. My last comment is that Del Taco is a good neighbor. I know from my experiences, you guys have done a good job with the Utah National Guard Charitable Trust and a couple other things. So any of the comments that I'm making now are only derived at the site plan itself and not at Del Taco. I think that as a condition of this, I think we've gotta put a, because it's in a PC zone, because we wanna have walkable communities, we wanna have, I think we've gotta put some sort of walkable sidewalk from the street to the south to the front of the building somehow. And I think if that's a condition that we can add to the approval, then I'd be for it. If we can't add that, can we add that as a condition?
The problem is this is a planned development and the development outside of this parcel's already been approved and that person's not here tonight. So you're kind of putting a condition on a neighboring parcel that's not before the board tonight. Is that correct, Larry?
Although that doesn't necessarily handcuff us to not do that on this parcel and then bring that up for the adjoining parcel.
If the other parcel though is, from the looks of what I'm looking at is a parking lot and it looks to me like it's already been approved. So now you're running a sidewalk to a parcel that's approved with a parking lot into nowhere. I don't know how you're getting that other parcel back in here to get the sidewalk extended.
So I think if you'll give staff the latitude, we've heard your concerns and we agree with them and we can work with, maybe put some sort of walkway on the east end there. But we'll certainly look at it if you'll give us the latitude to do that with the site planning conditional use approval. We're not gonna ignore your comment, so...
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. Well, with the discussion that we've had tonight, I'm going to move that we approve the preliminary and final site plan and conditional use permit for Del Taco located at 5526 West Ranches Loop Road in the planned community zone with the conditions listed in the staff report and with a recommendation for the city staff to work some sort of amenable agreement to get a protected walkway. I would like to see a walkway that perhaps runs down and maybe comes down that same sidewalk and then splits the parking bays right there, yeah, straight down, where it can be kind of protected from traffic running through that parking lot.
Which is a good point. If we're gonna do it, we wanna make it safe and not just do it, we wouldn't wanna have, you know...
It goes right to the street.
Right. Just straight all the way down through the parking lot to the street.
Neighborhood property, we're just talking about going from there straight to the street.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Was that an official motion?
That was an official motion, as goddamn as it was.
Commissioner Luthy?
I will second that, but I don't know that that's the only place it could go through. I think there's other options, so...
That's why in my motion, I just said a recommendation. It's not, it's no requirement, but it is recommended that we get some sort of pedestrian access that's protected through there. I don't wanna see, if possible, I don't wanna see a sidewalk that comes through that's just running parallel to where traffic flows. It'd be nice if we could somehow break it up so that pedestrians are a little more protected.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy, was that an official second to Commissioner Sikoski's motion?
There it is.
Thank you. And so discussion of that motion? Yes, if we're gonna do it, I would just wanna ensure it's done right, as Commissioner Sikoski mentioned, not just for the sake of doing it, but we'd hate to have a sidewalk and then have someone hurt on the sidewalk because it wasn't appropriate. And as Mr. Gardner said, I mean, staff very capable, giving them some latitude, just as long as we have it on record, but that's a concern of ours. Commissioner Quinney?
Yes, thank you. Just one quick question. I wonder if possibly we could suspend the vote on this motion really quickly. It looks like our applicant would like to say something else. You good? I will drop.
Okay. Any other...thank you. Any other discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero.
Actually, I didn't vote.
Oh, sorry.
I'm gonna vote negative.
Thank you for the correction. Motion carries five to one with Commissioner Green casting a dissenting vote. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan.
I am for it.
This brings us to item number three on the agenda this evening. I apologize if I mispronounced this. Mitchell Place? Mitchell, Michelle, Michael?
Mitchell.
Mitchell Place. 5411 West, 9,000 South, future plan use plan amendment for 24.08 acres from public facilities to high-density residential and rezone 24.08 acres from PF Public Facility Zone to R16B Single Family Residential 6,000 square foot minimum lots. Michael Investments LLC, Shawn Michael is the applicant. Did I say that correctly? Did I get it close on the pronunciation?
Mitchell.
Mitchell, thank you. Please come forward. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Good evening. Just a little history. My name's Shawn Mitchell. This is my brother Ole here. And this is our engineer Troy Walker with AWA. I may ask them to just come up and fill in a few things. A number of years ago, I was asked to serve on the Board of Trustees at the Utah Boys Ranch when we were at 6,200 South. And I didn't know much about the Boys Ranch, but I knew they were underwater and they were falling apart. And so they selected to sell that property. And I was responsible for helping purchase this property from what was then the RTC foreclosure. And we purchased 7,800 acres for about $200,000 to move the campus out there. We knew when it was built that, when we bought it, that we probably would not need all the property. And at one point in time, chose to sell the property to either fund the retirement program or to rehab some of the places. Now, the Boys Ranch has gone through a lot of transition. It's now a west... the Boys Ranch has gone through a lot of transition. It's now West Ridge Academy. I've not served on the board for many years, but here about two years ago, the Board of Trustees approached us and said, we need some money. We need it now. Can you buy the property? And so we elected to buy 24 acres, which is surplus for them. One of the questions we've had is what's highest best use of this property? It's an, it's an odd lot because you have a facility that's a treatment center for young boys and women. You have an industrial park to the south. You have high density residential, low income housing to the east, R110 zone, or excuse me, to the west and an R110 zone to the east with a church to the north. And so we thought to ourselves, what would really work best? What could be a transitional zone? In fact, we went to, I went to a number of different employers out in that area, primarily SME Steel, Wayne Searl. I tried to meet with Mark over at Cisco and talked to a few other people. But some of the employers out there would really like to see some affordable housing for their employees because most of their employees are going across town to live. And so the question is, what's affordable anymore? I guess the price of houses have gone through the roof. And so we initially have, and have proposed at this point, an R16 zone, R16 is C. It says B, but we thought it was C zone. And I've given you copies of the homes that we think are buildable up there. We have been working with Nate Ship of Candlelight Homes. He was also on the Board of Trustees for quite a few years at West Ridge as a transition from what exists to the west and what exists to the east. Ole, you want to add anything?
Could you please state your name, sir, for the record?
My name's Ole Mitchell. I'm a co-owner in Mitchell Investments.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering this. In the process of looking at the apartment situation there on the corner and looking at the homes R110, we started thinking about what might be something that could mitigate the transition between the high density and the R110 subdivision to the east. One of the thoughts we had, and it isn't listed in this, in this application right now, but as we've been contemplating, looking at this a little bit, we've had a chance to meet with multiple of the city council members. And in that process of meeting with them during this last week, one of the suggestions that came up that we're looking to have answers on is what if there was a transitional within the transition, meaning what if a portion of the project that we're looking for an R16 zone on were R16 to the west, but R18 to the east? So you have a buffer of nicer, larger lots along the R110 zone of the homes, but you also have a little bit of the lower, the lower priced, more affordable homes along the high density Sunset Ridge Apartments. So as we were rethinking that, one of the questions that we would pose and we would like an answer to, or we're seeking an answer to, if we discontinued this application at this, at this public meeting right now, and if we looked to postpone it and came forward with an R16, R18 combination, how would that, how could that be handled? Is there something, someone that could address that for us?
And we will address that. Thank you. Yeah, just not right now at this point, but in a few minutes, we'll address that.
Okay.
It's a very valid question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is not something we've ever done before, so we're learning as we go along.
You're doing great. Thank you.
One of the questions I have is, once it goes back to you, before you make a ruling, will we have a chance to address it again?
Yes. What will happen is after your, after you conclude your presentation, then we'll have the city staff give more information regarding the application and their thoughts. And then we'll open it up to the public comments section, which we have had multiple people sign up who would like to express some comments. And then you'll have an opportunity to come back up and address anything that was raised in the public comments section.
Would it be possible, I have some pictures of the houses that we're thinking of. Is it possible to throw, you have them, but the public doesn't have them. Is it possible to pull those up on the computer if I?
I believe we could just plug that in.
This is a zone change, so I don't think it's relevant to the subdivision.
Getting ahead of myself, of course. Yes, thank you. Yeah, that, it wouldn't be relevant to the zone change this evening. Not trying to shut you down.
No, that's okay. But we'll leave it for the public, them, and then the public comment. And then I'd like to respond before it goes back to you.
Of course. Yep, you'll be more than welcome to come back up. Thank you. And for city staff, we have Mr. McCandless presenting this this evening.
Yes, thank you. I think what I'll do is just kind of walk you through what the request is and then walk you through the surrounding uses and zoning. And then we'll address the split zoning in a minute.
Great, thank you. Yes, we want to make sure that the brothers, Mitchell, get both of their questions answered.
Okay. So with this, with this property, it is low, just north of West Ridge Academy. This is 90th South here. There's a church that's on the north side. I think one of the most important parts of this is to look, take a look at the zoning map just to get a sense for what's around or what's existing around it. To the north and northwest, there's an area that's zone PC or planned community. Over here, there's the Sunset Ridge Apartments. Up here is single family lots and the lot sizes there that are adjoining 90th South are probably in the range of seven, eight thousand square foot lots. On the east side, and it's quite a large area, there's, it's basically R110 zoning. So there's R110 zoning here and here, R110 zoning along the east boundary of the property. It's actually a little larger with R112 lots further to the east. And again, R110 zoning that's here on the, on the south side of that, this area. So this whole area that's on the east side is R110 zoning. You've got the Boys Ranch, there's currently public facilities. It's also designated on the general plan as public facilities. But then over on the west side, it's all basically light manufacturing. So when you're looking at, at the, the general plan, I mean, it does encourage, as I mentioned in the pre-meeting, that, that a variety of housing types is encouraged in the city. But the other thing it says is that it requires the density of residential infill development to be similar to existing adjacent residential development. So that's one of the things you'll need to look at is, you know, what's the appropriate land use? I mean, what's the appropriate density if this does go to residential? So again, we are looking at a general plan amendment and we're also looking at a rezoning As far as transitioning that or the change from an R18 to R16 zoning, or I mean, an R18, R16 split, we did, we did not, we only noticed it for the R16 zoning. And so if you so choose, we would need to table that, you need to table that and then bring that back. And then they would revise that and then bring that back. But it would also require that all the adjoining property owners be renoticed as part of that. If, if it is denied ultimately by the council, there is a one-year waiting period because this is an amendment to the land use map until they can come back in and, and ask for the same zone on the property. So, so that's what we need to happen. I think if the applicant wanted us to take another look at changing that to a split zone.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCandless? Very good. This is noticed as a public hearing as well. So we'll open that. And we have three individuals who have signed up in advance to speak regarding this application. And then after those three, please feel free to come forward if you have anything additional that you'd like to add by way of testimony or comment or concern. First, we'll hear from Mr. David Green. You'll have up to three minutes. Then Mr. Corbin England, three minutes. And Mr. Chad Thorneel, three minutes.
Thank you. My biggest concern is, my house is right there at that bottom corner. And our neighborhood's been there for about 14, 15 years. And the biggest concern as far as view goes is the fact that when that subdivision that we're in was created, there's four to five feet difference between where our home, our, you know, our ground is to where the West Ridge Academy property is. At the top of our sound wall, we're at their ground level and parking lot level. Anything that's built along that area is going to be something that we're going to be looking up to the basement. And so we would like to see that they bring that level down enough so that it's more of a normal neighbor to neighbor back fence rather than essentially losing our complete view of the Oker Mountains. Because, you know, that, I think that that's an essential part of the reason we live there and we could lose considerable value in our homes if, you know, the development is such that it completely blocks out the mountain views that we've enjoyed for 14 or 15 years. I think that's the main thing that I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And Mr. England?
I'm Corbin England. This would be my backyard. I'm right in the middle of the red there on Mysteria Way. Where Mr. Green lives, it may be four or five feet, but I took a photo here standing on my trampoline today and it's at least 10 feet. So there's a significant elevation concern there. I'm definitely not happy with an R16. You know, we have a really nice neighborhood, especially for West Jordan. We take pride in it. And an R110 would be something I'd be amenable to. But an R16, you know, you're going to cram them in really tight, shoulder to shoulder, and it's going to destroy our views. The two concerns I have, the property value decrease and then the grading. So if you've got any questions or if you'd like to see this picture better, I'm happy to circulate it.
You're welcome to bring it up and we could look at it. Thank you.
This is a seven foot cask retaining well. You can see the elevation above that.
Great, thank you, Mr. England. Next, Mr. Chad Thorneel.
Thank you. My name's Chad Thorell. I'm one of the owners of Historical Arts and Casting Incorporated. We own the two lots just to the west of the proposed development where the road comes down on the far west side heading south. We're concerned that there's not a clean line of demarcation between the industrial use and the residential use. If they were to create that road and put those houses there, you could have potential conflicts between the industrial use of the property. For example, we could run a 24-hour shift. There's no restriction on that, as they do down the street at Bannon. And if, if I was looking for a neighborhood to live in, I wouldn't want to live right next to an industrial park. You know, we built, we built these buildings back in 1993 and at the time, we were, we were assured that there would be some sort of buffer between the industrial and the residential. We were concerned when Sunset Ridge Apartments was built, there is a natural buffer there because of the flood zone that was, was existing. I believe that's not in effect anymore because the Mountain View corridor was built and that that's why development is being considered in, in that flood zone area. As was mentioned, it is, it's a tricky lot. It's a tricky, it's a tricky looking piece of property to try and come up with something useful that would be beneficial and considered an improvement for, for the city. But our main, our main concern is that, that leg that comes right down seems to, seems to encroach right into the industrial park. I mean, our company's been there since 1993. We design and build all different types of custom architectural metalwork. So we have a fab shop and a foundry. And, you know, we've, we've built our business. We just, we just finished being involved in the restoration of the U.S. Capitol Dome in Washington, DC. So it's a very, it's a very unique and very specific building that we have built and it's not easy for us to relocate. We've appreciated working in West Jordan and, and the neighbors and, and the rest of the industrial park there. And, and our concern is just there's, it seems to be more of a mixed, mixed use, more of a mixed bag with, with the type of residential that's proposed. As was mentioned, West Ridge Academy is a very unique, different type of school and facility. It's not necessarily a traditional public facilities. But as, as mentioned, that's our concern. There doesn't seem to be a clean line of, of demarcation between residential and industrial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thorell. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? If so, please come forward.
Will this be at the time of the state's schedule?
No, sir, not quite yet. But I promise we'll let you be able to have some time. Thank you for asking. Anyone else on this item this evening? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and we'll go back to city staff. Mr. McCandless, if you could please address Mr. Green and Mr. England's main concern of view and elevation. You know, we've already talked about R16 and R110, but you might want to speak to that again. And then Mr. Thorell mentioned not just having a line of demarcation on a map, but a clear visual buffer of, between areas of the, of the city, different zones. Could you speak to those two items, please?
As far as the difference in grade between the two developments, you find that in various areas throughout the city and other cities as well. It's, it's always an issue because it's, if you've got a fairly significant grade difference, yes, there will be some, you know, houses that are higher than others. But this, this is part of the rezoning request and so we're looking at the use and not the site detail on it at this point. But it's something that would certainly be considered as part of the subdivision review. So at this point, you're looking at use and whether or not it's, it's going to work and what's, what the density should be. But, you know, as far as grading, that's something that their engineer would have to look at, you know, to bring those houses more in line or the level of those houses in line because there's other issues at play. There are drainage issues and, and some other things that come into play as part of that. As far as the use itself, there is, well, in terms of the, the access, that's, you know, that is a, an issue because you will, you, there's nothing to prevent either the residences from using those industrial streets or the trucks from using the residential streets unless there's signage. But even if that's the case, it's, it doesn't close it all off. The only thing is, is that you've got a kind of a major street to the, to the west. And so it's likely that the larger trucks would be using those streets rather than these, the smaller local streets. The, the issue of the, the compatibility, you know, it's not always the, the, the most ideal situation to have single family next to a heavier industrial use. But we've got that all over the city. We've got a number of areas where we've got residential uses that are, are next to industrial uses. And I think one of the reasons that that, in fact, I think that's, one of the reasons that public facility zoning there is to serve as that buffer so that you can come in with some other kind of a use that would provide that, that transition between those residences and residences. other kind of a use that would provide that transition between those residences and residential uses, and the more intensive industrial uses. So, I don't know if I answered your question, but that's kind of how I see it.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McCandless. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's important to just kind of maybe take a minute and explain kind of the process to our great citizens that have come out and commented tonight. What we're doing tonight is we're looking at the potential to change the zoning. What you're seeing up there right now is a concept. It's not the final plat or anything like that. And what we have to take into account when we look at this, is if the actual zoning change to the high density would be within the highest and best use of the city. Something that we hear all the time is that if they build on this lot, then my view will change. And that's not to say that that's not a concern. However, we are also kind of bound by the laws of land law and use, and that is that if someone owns something that's zoned residential, they have a right to build on it, the same that you do. So, unfortunately, a lot of times, you'll hear from a builder or developer, because they're trying to sell their lot, "Look at these amazing views," but there's no, there's no legal grounds for them to give you that view, and there's no legal grounds for the neighbor to not build, because it's going to block a view. So, as unfortunate as that is, it's something that we can't consider. But I promise we will look into all of the other issues that have been brought up tonight, and we do appreciate all of your comments. When this, if this passes tonight, or if it passes with the city council, then you'll want to follow it, and if it proceeds to the point where there is a plat or a design that's brought forth, that's when you would want to come and comment on all of those items.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mitchell, now's the time that you've been waiting for, to be able to come up. And please feel free to say whatever you'd like to address any of the concerns that have been mentioned by residents or staff. We can have a little bit of a more free-flowing conversation here, instead of just linear one-way.
Thank you. First of all, I appreciate the staff and their comments and their opinion. It's important. Second of all, I appreciate being the neighbor. We want to be good neighbors. And I don't know that we can make everybody happy, but that certainly would be our goal. And perhaps if we made a few modifications, we could build a Rambler rather than a two-story. You know, I don't know. I don't want to take, I like my view, too. I don't want it taken away, and so we would want to address that. But some of the things that we've heard tonight, and that we've been able to receive comments from others even prior to this meeting, lead me to believe that at this point in time, I would like to continue this for one meeting, and explore the possibilities of doing a combination of an R1-6, R1-8 transition. So, we would have R1-8 toward the east end, which then would accommodate bigger houses, bigger lots, and perhaps a bigger footprint to put a Rambler in, so we could in fact make, be good neighbors. So, at this point in time, without you voting, I would like to continue that for, is that an option I have?
Of course, it's your application. We would need to just make sure we're understanding the matter of semantics, either withdraw or continue, meaning postpone.
Yes.
As city staff mentioned, we would need to re-notice this, but there's also some other logistics that need to be set in place. Commissioner Green, and then Commissioner Sikoski.
Couple, at least one question for you, and then I've got a comment. So, the question that I have is, based in current city code, R1-6 is considered high density. R1-10 is considered low density, correct?
Medium density.
Is it, R1-10's medium?
Medium density.
And what's R1-8? Is it medium or high?
Medium also. The R1-8's at the low end of medium density, you know, just pardon my pun, but...
I'm going to express my opinion that anything that has R1-6 in it, I will vote against. The old statement you always get, when you've always done it that way, "We just can't continue on the west side of West Jordan to continue to put small 6,000-square-foot houses on the west side of the city." Because we've had discussions of this over and over and over again, that it doesn't, it attracts, and I will tell you that based on this particular concept, and I know we can't talk about concepts, but this concept is totally to maximize the number of homes that you can put on a piece of property. It has an issue with the demarcation with the industrial, and I completely agree. There's at least one house that'll have a backyard to an industrial area. There's one that'll have a, basically a front yard view of an industrial area, and R1-6 just doesn't fit. The burden of proof in a zoning change has got to be on the applicant, and you've got to prove to us that this is going to be something that's beneficial for the city, and I can tell you it's not. We continue, we see, and when you talk about a split, and I'll give you my perspective on a split. We've had another development, 20 blocks down, 12 blocks down the street on the corner of 78th and U-11, that we have a split development, but it turned out that 75% of the homes were small homes. And that's what the developer's going to do. When we talk about splits, if you want to do a 90, if you talked about a 90-10, I might consider the 10 or 12 R1-6s in there. But when we're talking about 24 acres, and we're talking about putting that many homes on the west side of the city, it's just incompatible with the neighbors at R1-10. Yes, there's the Sunset Ridge Apartments, but I think there's a slight natural demarcation there because of the, what looked like a canal, probably the flood plain that was discussed. This just doesn't work. It doesn't work for me, and even a transition from R1-10 to go to R1-8 is not much of a transition. I think it's going to, I think it's going to hurt neighbors' values, and so anything that includes R1, I might consider some R1-8, but anything that's R1-6, has any mix of R1-6, I will be against.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your candor in discussing what, you know, what your intent is to perhaps want to table this item for another meeting. I do think it's prudent to kind of walk through this a little bit still, so that if you decide to do that, then you kind of get our, understand what our vision and goal for West Jordan is. And as we, as we sort of march towards the west bench, West Jordan has the unique opportunity of having a bench, and having really the only big tract of undeveloped land on the west side of the valley. And that's a beautiful thing for us, because we can develop that out in a way that is for the highest and best use of the city. And I've just kind of gone through the staff report here. In order for us to pass this, we have to compare it to the findings and the criteria. Finding C, I feel that the proposed amendment is not compatible with the other land uses around it. And the reason that I feel that way is because with a density this high, and the density that's already surrounding it, it puts a burden on the UDOT roads for access. You guys have one outlet onto the arterial route, and then one outlet onto a feeder road. And with this many properties that are going into there, it really is going to burden access to this community. I feel that it's too dense. And then the other thing that I really struggle with is, is that there really is no, when we deal with a lot of high density, the high density that's been brought before us lately is very dense with very few amenities. And that's not, in my opinion, for the public good. And I know this isn't a plat, it's not, you know, but when you bring something back, if you choose to do that, we got to see amenities. With density, there has to be public open space. There has to be things for the community that kind of make up for packing them in, so to speak. Finding D, the proposed amendment constitutes an overall improvement. This isn't an improvement. I mean, yes, is it an improvement over undeveloped land? Some may say yes, but I disagree with that statement, because once we lay something down, once it develops out, then that's what we have. It's not going away. So, it's on us as a planning commission to make sure that what's going to go in there is going to be for the highest and best use for generations, because that's what we're going to have. And so with that, I'd rather use the do-no-harm principle, and approach this from the view that we're going to look at many options, and what's the best use for this over a 30- to 50-year period? Because it's going to be there for longer than that, but what is the surrounding impact? And just jamming more and more and more tightly-packed homes into this area doesn't fit with that for me. Finding E, this amendment will adversely impact the neighborhood. Traffic, utilities, public facilities, every single one of those things that are part of finding E will be drastically impacted with this many rooftops. Continuing on to criteria one, it's, it has to conform with the purposes, goals, and objectives of the city. I don't feel this high-density conforms to the purposes, goals, or objectives of the city, because as we move towards our west bench, our goal was to make those areas nicer, more airy, more spread-out developments, that would increase the value of the properties as they go that way. This high-density doesn't do that, in my opinion. Criteria two, this is not a compatible use. High-density does not work adjacent to high-high-density. As was brought up before, there's no clear line of demarcation. We're just packing things in, catch as catch can, and we have to be careful with these infill projects because of that. There's a lot of surrounding, you know, uses of this area, and it would be nice to see something that has a little bit more clear boundary. And then, criteria three is the last, health, safety, and general welfare of the area. The industrial against the residential doesn't help out health, safety, or the general welfare. And a densely-packed-in community like this, I don't feel promotes health, safety, or general welfare for the community at large. So, I'm in agreement with the other commissioners that have spoken. I'd like to see something R1-10, or less dense than that. And I know that for you as a developer, it's got to pencil, and I understand that. But perhaps somewhere else in the city for a project like this, I don't feel like this particular piece of land is going to be the right place for this development. That's my opinion.
And I thank you so much. You know, and like I say, we intend to, we intend to just table it, postpone it, or continue it for a while. Perhaps we won't develop at all. I understand there's some things coming on in the county government right now, which may in fact allow us to do a more dense thing down the way, but that's not our goal. Our goal is to try to do something that's good for everybody, a win-win situation, and we think we can come up with something that I think will be compatible with what you want, and compatible with the neighbors, and I think that can be done here. Thank you so much. Any other questions you have for me?
Commissioner Luthy.
I just want to echo some of the things that have been said. I think that some of the concerns could be alleviated with some more open space in the area. The area that fronts the industrial, maybe that would be a good place to put some open space. But I think the majority of us here really feel like it needs to be an R1-10 or larger to be able to fit in with the idea of this area. So, just so that you don't come back and then go, "We've made some changes," and we go, "Well, it's still not what we're wanting," just so that you've got an idea upfront of what we were kind of thinking.
I appreciate your input. We'll take that under advisement, and then come back. What is that, about a two- or three-week process to re-notice everything?
At least, it's probably three weeks.
Okay.
First meeting in September, probably.
I'm sending out notices for the next meeting in like two days, so it's already being noticed, so I don't think, and especially if you're changing the type, it would have to go in the newspaper, and that was, the deadline for that was yesterday.
So, it'd be, likely be the first meeting in September if they can turn it around.
Well, our next meeting is September, right? So, middle of September?
Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you. I just have one kind of counterpoint I wanted to make. I don't, I know we're not considering the concept plan. I don't like what we're looking at right here. However, to kind of argue against the rest of the commission, I think that there's room for some smaller lots that make sense for families that want to live closer to their work. We've, you specifically mentioned that some of these employers have asked for some of these smaller ones. Some of the conversations I've been engaging in have talked about having more affordable housing, and, you know, we didn't, we never defined what affordable is, but I think that having smaller lots allows us to have affordable housing. These R1-10 get to the point where you start pricing out these workers that work in these factories, and in these industry zones out here. I think these smaller lots allow us to keep housing a little bit more affordable for some of those. I don't like R1-6 to this whole thing. That doesn't make sense to me, but definitely, I would not be opposed to having R1-6 in this area. Thank you.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. Just to counter that, finish and design of a house really dictate the price. I know by experience that you can take a house on a tenth of an acre and build it to a point where you can sell it for $500,000. So, depending on the finishes, and if Candlelight is the builder that is looking to potentially build here, these are not going to be affordable homes. Candlelight tends to have a higher standard than some of the other builders, and there again, the product isn't what I'm so much worried about. I know that you can find a builder that'll build a beautiful home on a very small lot, and that there is a market for that. My concern lies with what's around this. If you look at the aerial map here, you can see that the density in this area is already very intense. And I feel that building in an R1-6 in this area would add to congestion and problems. I'm not opposed to seeing something like this in another area of the city. I'm not. And I think honestly, that if you came back with a different design in an R1-10, added some great amenities, Candlelight might still be interested in building, because people are moving out this way. It's, this is the new area to build. And we can still get a high-end product in this, in this area, that I think would pencil a little bit better for the city's causes, and may still get you what you're after as a developer.
And we've addressed that. We've met with Perry Homes, and a lot of other Ivy Homes, and Candlelight Homes. Again, the issue is, you've got industrial, Westridge there, you have high-density, low-income housing to the west. It's different than just taking another, and so, yes, an issue is, we're at location, 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 and they're not going to build a half-a-million-dollar house in this location, because nobody will buy it. It's just that simple.
Yeah, I understand. From our perspective, though, we can't just pigeonhole something in because it pencils our development.
I understand that.
So, but I just wanted to comment as well, please don't be discouraged in the sense that we want you to build in West Jordan. We want, we want your business. We just have to make sure that the product that's going in is going to conform to what the end goal of West Jordan is.
Thank you so much. Any other comments?
Commissioner Green, anything else?
You had something.
Commissioner Luthy?
I want her to go first before...
I want her to go first before.
All, all I was gonna say is as far as, sorry, as far as affordable housing, there are areas very close to this area that have the smaller lots, starter homes, such as the, a lot of the Maples area and the Sycamores area that, it is close. It's not like they'd have to leave the city. There are things that are close by, that this isn't the only option, was all I was gonna say. But I agree, I would even be a lot more in favor of a smaller lot if it was something that brought in a lot more amenities with open space, and it felt more like instead of having these large lots, you get the small lots, but you get this, and this, and this. And that, that would be probably the thing that would have to change in order to solve the idea.
Commissioner Green.
So the applicant has, has talked about, so what I want to do is walk through this so we know what we're, what we're thinking about. The, the applicant has talked about continuing this.
So do we, do we have the authority to continue it? Do we table it?
Go ahead.
Table's the key word. You're gonna make the motion to table on both counts on the application. As far as the noticing goes, noticing requirements will depend on what he chooses to do. Obviously, if he meets and they pencil their project out and they say, no, this is the project, this is what we want to present, they don't need to renotice it. It's been noticed, and they could come back forward and just go straight back into a meeting. But obviously, if they make changes, then they would have to renotice and go from there. If he wants to table the project today, then it'd just be a simple motion to table and reconsider upon the applicant's meeting of the requirements to get it back on the agenda.
And would it be more appropriate for the applicant to table, or would we proactively take that measure?
I would make a motion on your behalf to table. It's on your agenda, it cleans your agenda, and it, it keeps it in order.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Green.
Oh, I forgot to turn that off, sorry.
Well, is there a motion that any commissioner would like to make? Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would just like to address the applicant. Is it your intent to, to table this?
Yes.
Okay. Then I make the motion that we table this item to, to the next possible meeting where particular noticing, depending on what the applicant decides to do, can be made or not made depending on his decision.
Commissioner Quinney.
Can you change that to a future meeting? Future Planning Commission meeting?
Yes, I, I will change the verdict to a future Planning Commission meeting.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion of that motion. Commissioner Green.
So have we passed the ordinance where we're doing the, the zoning changes once a...
Yes.
When does that actually take effect?
It's in effect right now, but we have several items that applied before that ordinance.
So with this one tabling, that would go on to a quarterly meeting, or this would continue the way we're doing it?
No, we'd continue. This is an app, active application.
Okay.
Any other discussion to the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you again for...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience, thank you for your presentation.
We'll come back with something that'll work.
This brings us to item number four on our agenda this evening, Parker Place, 7378 and 7410 South Redwood Road, General Plan Land Use Map Amendment for approximately .87 acres from high-density residential to professional office. And rezone approximately 2.08 acres from R18A Single Family Residential 8,000 square foot lots zone to R38SHO Senior Housing Overlay, multifamily residential, eight units per acre maximum density zone. And rezone .87 acres from R18A Single Family Residential 8,000 square foot lots zone to PO Professional Office Zone. Cannon and Company, Gary Cannon is the applicant. Are you here this evening? Thank you for your patience. Thanks for sticking it out. We want to make sure we're thorough, and we'll extend you the same courtesy, sir. Please present your application.
Thanks for having me. I had a mosquito bite on my arm, and I picked, and it's bleeding, so if I stand here, I'll find out why.
We, we can get you a Band-Aid. We, we have some emergency personnel.
A Band-Aid would be great if somebody's got one of those in their pocket. I don't, I'm not my best gal.
Sure we have a first aid kit around somewhere.
Well, after that last for you, I'm a little nervous standing here before you tonight, but a little of my history, I'm almost a 20-year business owner in the city of West Jordan. I am a landowner in West Jordan. I own a real estate company here. This particular property, unfortunately, almost a year ago, a gentleman asked me to help him with it. We've had three other builders make offers on the property, weren't able to make it work. We came back with this concept. I'd like to give you a little bit of history on, I've been in the real estate industry now for 33 years. I am an industry guy, and I'm very proud of that. I was Realtor of the Year in 2011. I was president of the Salt Lake Board in 2007. What I am good at is statistics, and, and I need to convey some information that you may or may not be aware of, but there are, right now, today, there are over 10,000 people a day turning 65 in the United States. 10,000 people a day. With this in mind, I feel like I've presented and put together and presented with the, with the help of the planner and, and the administration here, and they've done an excellent job, excellent job in assisting us get to this point, in, in kind of holding our hand and telling us what may work on this property. So as much as I stand here before you to present my product, I'm more here to address any questions and concerns that you may have. The product you have before you is a 55 or older community. Let me be clear with that. It is 55 or older. These are single-family homes. They aren't attached homes. And one of the big problems, the challenges that I'm running into in, in the real estate market in general is running into is a need for a place for our parents. I'm, I'm almost 53. I'm only a couple of years away from this type of product. I hope I last a little bit longer than that, but, you know, this would be a perfect place that I'd want to put my parents, and maybe you guys would look at it and view it that way as well. You'll have yards. Recent survey came out, this is, you'll find this very informative because I am a pet owner. I, I turned in my man card to say that I have a four and a half pound Shih Tzu. And 81% of the retirees right now are making their buying decision based on their pet. I found that very, very profound. These are Ramblor plans. They will have the option of having basements if they want them. They are going to have yards. They'll be fully fenced. The product we have in front of you is a two-car garage, which will be the main thing that we are going to make as an option. If the consumer would rather have a single car unit, we may develop into that if, if we feel the demand is there. So I'm open to your questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. More of just a curiosity at this point, because I know we're not addressing this, but is, is your intent to have an HOA where the property would be managed by, as far as landscaping and stuff would be managed outside of homeowners, or would the, the homeowners be managing their property?
My intent, if, if, it would have to be left up to them, but if, if they, if they want to take that on and create a homeowner association within, then they would, or it would just be under a management company. It's a small enough development that I don't know what the demand out there is, but if they would like to take that on, they could.
Okay.
The road now going in there is 19 feet wide, and we're going to be increasing the width of that to 42 feet, which will still access the, the three property owners to the west, two of which run small businesses at the back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon? Commissioner Hatch?
I would just like to say this is my demographic, so thank you. My husband and I recently moved and looked for a home that was one level, had its own backyard, and they are hard to find. So thank you, and I think this looks great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. We will reserve some time for you if there's anything that you'd like to address after the public comment section.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you. I was also very fortunate to align myself with this, a business that would like to relocate. We, this, this isn't, this is a unique situation where we're not going to be putting it up for sale. We have a, a company that has already placed an offer on the professional office. They're here tonight, if you'd like to ask them how their company is running. I don't want, Dean wouldn't mind standing up in front of you and telling them that they've been in business. I, I included that in your packet, a little bit about their company, so if you have some questions on, it's a very small use business, a five to 1,000 six-foot square foot, or five to 1,000 square foot building. So I would be up for questions.
Thank you. We might, we might hear from him on the public comment section.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Just on the...
Sure, there's nothing? No. I didn't hear.
Meaning the information that Mr. Cannon just referenced, do we have it in here? Yeah, but we've just got the rezone, right?
He set up a narrative, and I, I failed to put it in the staff report, so I guess we pay in.
But it would really be relevant to the rezone, right?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to hear from, from that person what he wants to do.
Sounds great. And Mr. Gardner, you have this for the city this evening?
Uh-huh. And so, as Mr. Cannon, he, he described what the property is, it's on Drake Lane, and then it's off of Redwood Road, and then the, the professional office piece is right here would come off of Redwood Road, but the access would be off of Drake Lane. Is, if this progresses through the subdivision process, of course, the road would have to be built to, to city standards, and that, you know, there's some property ownership issues that would have to be taken care of on Drake Lane, but that would be up to him to work that out during the subdivision process. So currently, the property is all zoned, or on the land use map as high-density residential, both pieces, and the applicant, what he's asking to change is the office piece to professional office on the land use map. And, sorry, and change it, rezone it to professional office to allow that office use that was alluded to. The two-acre piece adjacent to the apartments and the Drake's farm, he's asking to change it to an R312, well, an R3 zone with the senior housing overlay. And what that would allow for is a, a single-family home on a 4,000 square foot lot, as he said, 55 and, and older. To give you the lay of the land, these two properties are nearly adjacent to the elementary school to the south, and the Drake's farm is to the west, and then of course, there's an apartment complex, Aspen Pines to the north, and then one of the major corridors of the city is to the east. And so, all of the access for any of this would have to be off of Drake Lane via Redwood Road. This is a conceptual layout of what Mr. Cannon has, has proposed. As you can see, the road is significantly wider, and there'd be 14 lots in the, in this development. They would, the houses towards the, where it would be accessed by, via these lanes or hammerheads, which would all have to comply to, to fire standards. This is where the, the professional office would go. And conceptually, this is some of the product that Mr. Cannon was talking about, building small, small homes. Hopefully, you don't have your adult children move back in with you if you want it that small enough. Anyway, that's all I've got, and staff has recommended approval, or recommending a positive approval on both the zone change and the general land use map amendments, feeling that it meets all of the criteria required for both of these. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
Commissioner Green.
So on the current land use map, it is designated as high resident, as high density.
Yes, sir.
So we're not changing the land use map, we're only changing the zoning from R18 to R38SHO?
On the residential, on that two acres. So now the, the PO stuff, I'm not worried about because we pulled that out. I'm good for putting offices along, all the way down Redwood. But you're not changing the land use map on the, you're just rezoning the property.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gardner? Commissioner Luthy?
I have two questions, actually. One was the comment made of single garages. It's my understanding that the city requires a two-car garage, correct? So, but that's not an option to go down to one?
It's not.
Okay. The other comment I had is it doesn't look like there's anywhere on here that for like a stormwater detention basin. I know that's always my trigger issue, so I'm assuming that a lot is going to need to be lost to be able to put something in for that.
Potentially, that'll be worked out.
Okay, I'd like to recommend that if that's the case, maybe you look at putting some sort of like a community garden with it to add a little bit, some nice open space, and not just a, a little pond.
Thank you. Well, this is noticed as a public meeting, and so we have a public hearing section now. We have Jeanette Drake, who has signed up to speak in advance. Mrs. Drake, if you'd like to come forward, please. And then anyone else that would like to subsequently speak after Mrs. Drake, please feel welcome to do so. You each have three minutes.
All right, I'm not opposed to this. The Pearson family and the Parker family are friends, but I do have some questions and concerns because we run the Drake Family Farms goat dairy, and so we want to know what would, there might be some advantages to us, but then I have some questions too. We would still like to have our, with, the Drake Family Farms is a century, a Utah century farm, is a designated historic farm, and we have signed on Redwood Road. We have customers that come, and so we would want to be able to keep the sign and keep our customers. Our employees would like to still have jobs. And I guess I have a concern about the people buying the homes realize that they're buying a home next to a working farm. When, when Richland Estates was put in, some of the realtors told the people that were buying their homes that our farm was going to be developed too, and the children would be able to walk right through the, to, straight through to go to school, and then we had hordes of trespassing children, and then my mother-in-law and father-in-law donated land for a pathway so that they could go around the farm, so we don't, so that's a concern. And then I realized a lot of trees are going to be gone, and I just want you to know that I'm gonna cry when those trees go down. There's, it's, only God can make a tree, but I, I guess, I hope they put some more trees there somewhere. And then they've told us that we'll be getting sewer up to our property line, and then I guess they'll be widening the road. So will we be required, are there going to be some expenses for us when we connect to the sewer? Are we going to have to extend like the parts of Drake Lane that's in front of our property that's owned by us? Is that going to become a city road, or? And then there's all the utilities that go there. There's an irrigation ditch that's underneath the lane, and, well, there's two actually. There's one that goes parallel to the lane, and then there's another one that goes north, and then it goes underground under the apartments, and then other people get the irrigation water, and we'd still like to be able to use the irrigation water, but that might be helpful for the storm drain thing. So I think that's about all that I had. So thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mrs. Drake. We'll definitely address those questions and concerns. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? If you could please state your name for the public record, sir, and your address?
My name is Dean Wangensgaard. My address is 14723 South Kern Creek Circle in Bluffdale, Utah. I'm the president of NACM Intermountain. We're the prospective buyer for the commercial building there, and what we are is an association made up of manufacturers, wholesalers, so forth, around the valley. We have a large territory. We cover most of Utah, western Wyoming, southern Idaho, and eastern Nevada. We've been in the commercial credit reporting business in Salt Lake City since 1901. If memory serves me correctly, we were the 47th corporation, but don't hang me on that, okay? So we feel like we've been in this... hang me on that, okay? So we feel like we've been in this community for a good long time. We're in an office condo right now. And two years ago, the board of directors approved us to look for our own freestanding building. And we have looked and looked and looked. We, we have a lot of restrictions as to far, where we can be located. And this property really fits our needs. And quite honestly, we kind of believe it might be karma that we stumbled onto this because our street address in Sandy is seventy-four ten. And the address of this property happens to be seventy-four ten. So with that said, we feel like we would be a good neighbor, a good asset to the city. And we would appreciate your supporting vote for this zoning change.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing section. And let's go to city staff. Uh, Mr. Gardner, if you could speak to anything that Mrs. Drake brought up, specifically, uh, trees, the active farm, sewer extension, utilities, you know, irrigation ditch?
The trees, uh, we'll work the best we can to preserve. There's something in our ordinance that trees that can be preserved, uh, should be. And so, but that would have to be a little farther down the road with the subdivision process. Irrigation water is a right that she has that cannot be interrupted. They are bought and paid for by the, the property owner. That ditch, uh, has been there a long, long time. And whatever, however that water is conveyed, whether by ditch, but I'm sure it would be piped, it has to still get to the point where it belongs. Uh, the applicant or the developer will have to take care of that and make sure that it is, uh, in a sufficient way that the, the water users are not interrupted service at all. Um, the active farm can stay an active farm. Uh, it's been, like she said, over a hundred years. Uh, in fact, Utah state law has, you know, that, that cannot be a reason for, uh, denial of any type of subdivision application because it is adjacent to, uh, an active farm. Now, of course, you know, there are nuisance laws. If there's dead animals and that type of thing, those can be addressed, but those are very specific and not general. So the farm, uh, would not be, uh, interrupted. We cannot interrupt it with this application. That's their right. They've been doing it. They've been licensed. As far as the sign, uh, again, the directional sign may be appropriate, but you'll have to work that out with whoever owns the property that the sign is on. I, the city cannot impose and tell someone they have to allow a sign on their property if they don't want it. That would have to be something they would have to work out with, uh, um, the, uh, whoever owns the property where the directional sign is. I think we could look at this as a directional sign. Um, however, we would have to look at the ordinance. I'm not making any promises at this meeting about the signage. As far as the, the sewer, I'll defer that to our city engineer who's much more knowledgeable on that than I am.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Nelson, could you speak toward the sewer issue? Specifically, Mrs. Drake was concerned about if there needs to be a sewer extension. You know, would she have any personal cost? Or if you could just talk about?
I'm not sure I answered the exact question, but I, my assumption is that this, uh, road will be a, a public road. And in such, it'll have sewer lines to it. And we will bring a sewer to the very end of it because we always do it in a way that it stubs to adjacent undeveloped land. So it would, it would, it's something that would be available for them to connect to if they chose to. Um, one thing I, she had a lot of good comments regarding utilities. And one thing I would invite, uh, for her and, uh, when the, once the site gets rezoned and they, they get a, a civil engineering professional involved and to start working on the design is that they get with the Drakes and they, they make sure they understand how all the interconnections are with the, the storm drainage and the sewer lines and those sort of things. And then once we, as a, as a city staff, start to review their, their civil plans, again, I would invite the Drakes to come in and, and meet with us so that we can hear their comments and concerns and make sure that they're addressed in the final design set.
Great. Thank you.
I haven't answered the question. Uh, really, the fact is that, you know, we, we'd like to get into those details at the, at the appropriate time and, and hear from them.
And I know that this piece of property has been on the radar of city council and planning commission. Gosh, this is four and a half years I've served on planning commission. And I know we want to make sure that this is done the right way, especially anything that deals with Redwood Road and, and, uh, anything that goes off of there. And, uh, so yes, we, we certainly want to be deliberate on this. Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Gardner, I'm wondering, is it, with this farm being a centennial farm, it qualifies as a Utah historic site? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't know. I'm not an expert on that. I do, I do know the state of Utah in, uh, nineteen ninety-six, they came up with the centennial farm to recognize, uh, farms that had, you know, been here since people arrived in the valley. Uh, I don't, I'm not an expert on historic. I know that, uh, I don't know if you could or would even want to, uh, put that classification on your property.
Right.
But, uh, you know, it's sort of been around a long time. That's at least a hundred years.
I just wondered because as, as, if it does qualify as a historic site, my understanding is that they're allowed a, a marker or a sign that would, one of those brown signs off the road that would fall in the public right of way.
Yeah. But still, that would be, uh, up to a negotiation with the property owner because the city doesn't have, they'd become a taking of property if we were to enforce it. And the one other thing I wanted to say is that, uh, the cost for the improvements would be upon the developers. The, the Drakes do not have to share on this. It would be dedicated as a public right of way. Now they would have right to use that as a public road. But she was concerned about, you know, draining their coffers on something and so, but no, that would be completely developer paid for. So.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Uh, are you going to let the, the?
Yes, we're still just, uh, I was just wondering if you had a question?
I'll wait till after the, you, you've had the developer have a chance to respond.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Cannon, would you like to have any time to address anything that's been said by, um, any of the, uh, public comments this evening?
Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, a couple of things. I, I love trees. Uh, the best time to plant a tree was today. And the second best time was yesterday. And, and I, I really believe in trees. If, if they're compatible with the subdivision as it, as we move forward. I have met with the Drakes, just so you know. This is, this, they were aware. There, there were some good questions there that I did not do a very good job of answering for them. Um, I view, I view the Drake Family Farm as an amenity to this project. Um, I think that the grandkids of some of the people who live there will want to come over here to see their goats. I don't think it'll be a distraction. I think those will be some of the best lots or most fought after lots are the ones that back the farm. Another thing, uh, the sewer line, I did address that with them the other day with Mr. Drake, that we will run the sewer line, stub it onto their property and, uh, they would be, have the ability to tie onto that if the sewer district or the city allows them or, or asks them to do so. Another key question here, the ditch. Um, the ditch that runs parallel to the property or down the middle of the road is serviced by the South Jordan Canal. And, and it runs up, down through there. After it passes the Drake Farm, I think there's still maybe three or four users left on that ditch. Does that sound about right, Ron? Is there a fear for? Um, I hate, I hate to bring it up in this meeting, but we have a lot of pull with the South Jordan Canal as I'm the president. So the, the ditch, with the ditch problem, I, the ditch challenge will not be won whatsoever because I am so far, and I'm a board member of the State Water Association and I'm on the Utah Lake Water Union Association as well. I'm a big water guy. So there'll be no problems with water and, and getting it to the end users. Any other questions that I can address for you guys and gals?
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon?
Oh, another thing. The homes in here, the small plan that you've been shown is about eleven hundred and fifty feet. And the larger plan is just to ride around fourteen hundred square feet excluding the basement. And I need to clarify, when I said the one car garage, I was completely out of bounds in saying that. I was not aware that this zoning requires a two car garage. If it does, that's what will be there. The only reason I did that was for, uh, economical purposes. If somebody couldn't afford a two car garage and needed to do a one.
Great. Thank you. Could we please go back to the previous slide? There's some question among planning commissioners on where this ditch is exactly. It's going to be a moot point because it'll be taken care of, but.
Gary, Gary, there's a pointer right there. So if you just...
Okay.
Is it turned on?
Oh, sorry. Oh, I got it. I got it. There we go. Ron, you may need to help me with this, but I believe it runs down this, this, uh, the, the south property line. Is that correct? So it would, it would be written in place. We would just, uh, you close it.
Probably about ten feet away from the school property.
Yeah. I knew it was there, but I didn't know for sure where it was. And Ron pointed that out to me the other day as well.
Thank you.
And there, there's also one that runs parallel to the property going back to the north. And I believe it services this, uh, large vacant property. Is that correct? And that, that would remain. If it's, if it's on our property, then we'll obviously, uh, put it in some concrete. If it's on theirs, it'll probably just remain open, open trench.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Are we, are we okay? I'll sit down if you want.
I just want to make sure we're okay. Uh...
Do you have a question for Mr. Cannon?
No.
Okay. Please feel free to sit down and nurse your arm. Thank you.
I have absolutely no problems putting the, the office complex or the office building on Redwood Road. I'd like to see everything between there and the, the entire west side and most of the east side become office complex or office buildings on Redwood Road. So I think that's going to be a good improvement. My comment is, and this actually would, would be more tied to what Commissioner Luthy said, as you come back to this, because I, uh, as I look at the concept plan, I think it's got a couple of issues. One, that you've mentioned that, that, where's the retention pond? Uh, I look at it and think there's no place for a fire truck to turn around here. Uh, and so, uh, I'm concerned with the layout. And so I think that as, as you come back and we talk about subdivision plats and all those kinds of things, I think you need to look at the layout of the, the property, uh, and what works down those two little lanes, uh, and if they actually do work. Uh, it's already high density on the, on the general land use map. Uh, the R one eight, uh, I, I don't think R one eight's going to fit in that particular piece of property very well anyway as an infill. Uh, so I'm okay with that. I, so my, that's, that's going to be my, uh, my advice to you is to take a, take a, a real good look at the, the, the retention pond, community gardens, maybe some open, however that works to fit so that you have an appropriate turnaround for fire trucks and hollers. Because, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but that doesn't work for fire trucks.
Um, it would, it's been quite a while since I've seen this. Um, and so I can't remember exactly what our dimensions are. Uh, we do have one hammerhead, uh, in that the east, east leg could be turned into a hammerhead. The, the west leg, um, because it's only half dimension, I'm not sure that that will work. But it also goes back to how long they are, uh, as far as being a dead end. But we'll, we'll work that through in the, as we get through this subdivision.
Okay. But I think that's, I think that's a couple of things to, to, to make sure that it works with fire turnarounds and that there may be, uh, some slight amenities, particularly if you got to put a, take a yard out for, uh, retention law, or retention pond and those kinds of things anyway. So.
Well, thank you. Yes. And so long as we can get back there and I can still buy my soap and have my kids see the goats. That's great. So, yeah, in full disclosure, I've bought many a soap from Mrs. Drake and, and my kids love the goats. But, but of course, I just want to disclose that. It wouldn't bear any relevance on the, on the decision here for this application this evening. Well, do we have any recommendation for action by a planning commissioner? Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before I make the motion, I'd just like to say, uh, that I like this layout. I, I feel like, um, having a professional office adjacent to Redwood Road, that's where it goes. And, uh, it's nice to see a plan that, that has that kind of forethought. Um, and I appreciate that because it makes our city a nicer, more, um, just a, a little more continuity in design. And I, I appreciate that. So, uh, with that being said, uh, there's two motions here. Uh, first, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report. And upon what we've discussed and, and reviewed today, I move that the planning commission for a positive recommendation to amend the future land use map from high density residential to professional office on the property located at seventy-four ten South Redwood Road.
Commissioner Luthy?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Luthy. Is there any discussion to that motion? I would just like to say that I concur with Commissioner Sikoski. As we've looked at different plans for this property for many years, everything from very high residential with no office to, to a myriad of things that the city has proposed or potential developers have proposed. Uh, I agree, having the business end out on Redwood Road with the buffer so that you have these nice residential lots back there. It, it just makes sense and it feels right. Um, after many years of wondering what to do with this property. And, and I think this would be good for the surrounding community and, uh, the surrounding residents. Any other comments to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero unanimously. Commissioner Green.
So, uh, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and pot, and evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission for a positive recommendation to rezone two point zero eight acres from R one eight eight to R three eight senior housing overlay zone and point eight seven acres from R one eight eight, the professional office zone on the property located at seventy-four ten South Redwood Road.
Commissioner Sikoski?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Sikoski. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan and good luck with seventy-four ten. It seems like a lucky number for you.
Thank you so much.
Which brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening. Sprinkler Supply, fourteen fifty-seven, fourteen ninety-nine, fourteen thirty-seven west, seventy-eight hundred south, and seventy-eight seventy-eight south, fourteen ten west. Future land use map amendment for four point seven two acres from city center neighborhood T S O D, center to neighborhood commercial and rezone point nine two acres from C C F T S O D, city center frame transit station overlay district zone to C M heavy commercial zone. G M G, the second. Investment is the applicant. Is the representative from G M G present? Please feel free to come forward and present your application. Did I say that correctly? It's got a Roman numeral two. So I'm assuming.
G M G two.
G M G two. Thank you.
Could you please state your name? Chad Spencer. I'm the architect representing the owner here tonight.
Thank you.
And this is Sprinkler Supply. They recently purchased the three lots owned by UDOT, again seventy-eight hundred south. And they would like to build a new building on one of the, well, combine the lots and build a new warehouse to help bring some of their pipe materials and store it inside, um, during inclement weather and other things. And also to have a mechanic shop to work on their, their delivery trucks in that. And as the existing zone, um, a warehouse is not an approved use. So we're looking to rezone that so that they can build that warehouse building to again, expand their operations in this area. And their goal is to make that building look like a retail building. Um, so that has a, you know, a nice facade on seventy-eight hundred south so that it looks like a retail building. It just won't have... facade on 7800 South so that it looks like a retail building. It just won't have public access like a retail building. Everything will be served from the yard side of Sprinkler Supply. Their ultimate goal is to purchase the rest of the corner and kind of clean up that entire area. And this is kind of that first phase of of them, their master plan of what they would like to see done with this corner.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything to add? Okay, thank you. And we have, do we have any questions for the applicant? All right, Mr. Gardner?
Okay, so currently, the property, the applicants, if I can get my there it goes, the these three lots were owned by by UDOT for a number of years. You may have noticed when you particularly Kelvin, there used to be a lot of trees on them, but the the new owners cut down all the the old trees. It's on city center frame right now, which the whole area from basically back of Vasa Fitness to, you know, on the the north side of 7800 South. It is quite a large area, the zone city center frame. However, that doesn't really fit the needs of an active and growing business like Sprinkler Supply. Right now, their their property at 1410 West is Zone CM. And so they want to have similar zoning for the three lots out on 78 South, excuse me. And the applicant did a good job in describing what they want to do with the building. They will still do some retail there, but they also do a lot of work offsite with Sprinkler Supply. But they want to make the the building very attractive along the 78 foot 78 South frontage. So it just doesn't look like a blank barren wall. And so what they're asking is to remove the the transit station overlay land use designation from their entire property and put that into the neighborhood commercial land use, which is to the east, and then rezone the three lots to commercial manufacturing, which will allow for them to expansion. Now, during the site plan, there will also there'll be a subdivision required because there's a little bit of, we think, a little bit of dedication left on on 78 South and to combine the lots so they're not building across lot lines. And also, this will come back to the Planning Commission for approval because it is in a commercial zone and not in a manufacturing zone. So if this zone change goes to the City Council, you will see it again on a site plan approval in the future. And I think that's all I've got with kind of on the slide on the right is a conceptual layout of the building and the parking configuration and that type of thing. There will have to be a access agreement made with UDOT to access off of that property. But I think that's their off of 78 South, excuse me. But I believe that's one of their goals so they get better circulation through the site also. I think between that and the applicant, I've covered really what they what they're asking for. Do you have any questions of me?
Any questions for Mr. Gardner? All right, I think that's it. Thank you. Well, this is also noticed as a public meeting. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I'd just like to say that I I like the idea of having this facade face 7800 South. I think it encourages kind of our end goal, and that's to kind of eliminate all of the residential along 78th and and create a commercial corridor there. So I like that. And I like that their intent is to put a more of an attractive facade along 7800 South rather than just make it look like a dumpy warehouse. So I appreciate that Sprinkler Supply would be willing to do that. I like also that even though there's going to be possible like mechanical fixes and things going on, that that's going to be screened from public view. So I think that that's, you know, I know we've had a lot of discussion in the in the past of, you know, sites that along 7800 South where cars and vehicles and stuff could be left out to open view. I like that what they're doing is they're taking this and cleaning it up from what it currently is. I think it'll be a whole lot more attractive. And and I feel like this is obviously the right site for this since they're already there and and operating well and and providing a great business to West Jordan. So I definitely support this.
Commissioner Green.
I I think I echo your your sentiments. My biggest concern when I first saw this was, oh, my gosh, we're putting a warehouse on 7800 Street or 7800 South right across from the from the property that I think Sprinkler Supply owns on the other side of the road. And and just to give you a perspective, I own the backyard of the other piece of property that you own. So I appreciate you guys going and cleaning up the weeds the other day, by the way. But I I looked at this and I thought, oh, we don't we don't need a warehouse on 7800 South. But as as long as 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 long as this comes back and we can see the design, we don't have big warehouse doors facing 7800 South, and we've got the we've got some good architectural design and some landscaping that will be part of this, it sounds like because of the way the plan comes back, then I I think I'm going to be in favor of this because anything along 7800 South that that can improve the street right now is going to be better than what we have now. And in fact, if you want to if you want to just take both sides of 78th all the way from 13th to to Redwood Road, I'll let you do that, too. So.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, yes, and yes. I completely agree that this, the end product that's being shown is a great this has been an ice source for many years. I used to live over in this area and when there were homes there, and they were kind of ice source. So I'm excited for some change here. My one concern on this is what happens if we rezone it? And tomorrow, the economy goes bust and they decide they can't develop it tomorrow? Are they able to use this property now that's rezoned for storage?
No.
Okay, so nothing else could change on this. It's not going to I just don't want to change the zoning and now all of a sudden their plan doesn't get to go through and it it opens up a whole other can of worms where this could be used for other items. What else could it be used for? I mean, if if they decide not to develop, what could they use this space for under this new zoning?
Well, there is any of the uses allowed in the CM zone, basically either conditional or permitted, which are basically the same type of zones, same type of uses you see all in that in Park, you know, that type warehousing, manufacturing, that type of, you know, limited manufacturing, that type of thing. But outdoor storage, no, we don't allow that in this zone. Heavy industrial, we don't allow. And so, you know, but I I think that, you know, there always is the risk that somebody's going to rezone property and and then not do it. But in Sprinkler Supply's case, I really don't see that as a I don't think they would have bought the property to do that because it just doesn't make economic sense because it's much more costly than than, you know, trying to, you know, it just makes natural sense because it's connected to their business where three small lots running on 7800 South, Zone CM, are very are practically useless to anyone else. They're only useful to this property owner, so.
Is there a way to say that it could be rezoned, but it's contingent on this site plan?
No, we cannot do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Quinney.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you for doing business. Thank you for reinvesting in West Jordan, and I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. I think I think we all know the sentiment, and I support that. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report. And upon our discussion today, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to amend the future land use map on 4.72 acres from TOD Zone to Neighborhood Commercial on the property located at 1457 West, 7800 South.
Commissioner Quinney.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously six to zero. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your patience. You have the.
One more motion.
Oh, yeah, we have one more motion. I was trying to get out of here.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the Planning Commission forward a positive recommendation to rezone 0.92 acres from CCF, City Center Frame, to CM Heavy Commercial Zone, and removing 0.92 acres from the Transit Station Overlay District on property located at 1457 West, 7800 South.
Commissioner Quinney.
Second.
We have another motion by Commissioner Sikoski and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is unanimously approved as well, six to zero. So now it's time to say thanks for doing business. Appreciate you being here this evening, especially having the shortest item but saving it for the last. Any motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Great. Any dissension to that motion?
Is the next meeting the 15th?
Yes, we would stand adjourned until Tuesday the 15th of August.
Are we meeting on the 15th?
We're meeting on the 15th and then the 29th, right, with the City Council?
We're planning for the 15th.
Oh, I thought we were canceled.
I will not be I will not be here on the 15th. I will be out of town for work.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green will be excused for the 15th. And then a reminder, we do have that fifth Tuesday meeting with the Planning Commission and City Council. And be thinking about items that you'd really like to address, as we discussed earlier, to make sure we can use efficient use of time. And I will follow through and call Scott tomorrow to let him know that we'd like to reserve some time and have it listed on the agenda for any pertinent issues that we'd like to address. Okay.
You can do it on Monday.
Anything else for this evening?
Just thank our police officer back there for going above and beyond tonight, helping us with our technical crap.
Thank you, everyone, for troubleshooting IT. Appreciate working with you. We stand adjourned until the 15th.